We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Adams, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, as we open this meeting, we want to give honor to you. Thank you, God, for the time we have today to discuss the issues and make decisions. May you bless each person who took the time to gather here tonight and let your hand of protection be on them throughout the rest of the week. Let the work done here tonight come to fruition, and let it all be for your glory. Help us each to do our parts to bring the plans discussed to life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tebbin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We need to add Mike Flynn to the privilege of the floor and also add the Economic Development Committee report to the reports of committees.
Second. The motion in the second is to add Mike Flynn under privilege of the floor and add the Community and Economic Development Committee to the reports of committees. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, we have Paul Engel regarding concerns on closing of Boyer Street. Mr. Engel, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and council rules allow for three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Paul Engel. I live at 1113 Boyer Street there in Lima. And I'd like to first thank you guys for privilege of the floor. And as far as my concerns go, we were requested some time ago how we felt on the closure of Boyer to expand the facilities at the gas station there on Finley Road in Boyer. And when I asked those in my neighborhood how they felt about it, the chief concern that was raised was the selling of drug paraphernalia and the pornography that was there. We didn't want to support anything that would expand those shelves and elicit the kind of traffic that that stuff brings to our neighborhood. Our kids go down there, they shop down there, and we didn't want that kind of stuff coming to our neighborhood even in larger forms. And I was assured by some members of this council that the new building would be run under a structure that prohibited the sale of those things. And when the new store was built, shortly after it was built, I came in there with some others just to see what it was like, and to my dismay, I seen the very same things that they promised they wouldn't sell. And I don't, as of now, I don't believe those things are in there. I went there again several days later and seen that they were taken down, but I would, I come to council seeking their support that if ever it came again that they would stand behind the company's promise that they wouldn't bring that to our neighborhoods. I don't have to tell many of you guys the kind of traffic that that brings to our neighborhoods and the kind of trouble that we have with drugs in our city. I run an addictions program at the county jail, and as a correctional officer, I see the trouble that this brings to our city and to our families and us in our neighborhood. We don't want that there. So we'd appreciate council's support in that, and not only for our community convenience store, but maybe for those. I'm not sure what we can do, but if we stood together, then maybe we could make it not worth their while to sell the things that elicit that kind of behavior. Thank you for the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Next, under privilege of the floor is Geraldine Nieper regarding a claim. Mrs. Nieper, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Geraldine Nieper, and I live at 1459 West Market Street here in Lima. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to all of you. I apologize for my voice, I've been sick, but I didn't want to cancel. Anyways, on July 17th of 2015, I was driving on Finley Road in front of Schoonover Park during a heavy rainfall. I was driving slow due to the rainfall when a manhole cover popped up and hit the bottom of my car. I'm assuming it popped up due to pressure. I had never seen this before, though several people after we spoke with them, the mayor and the public works director had said it can and does occur during times of heavy rainfall. My first reaction afterwards was to call ODOT. I thought I knew I was on a state route, and I didn't know exactly where the city limits started and stopped. ODOT was very friendly and willing to help me until they found out the incident had occurred within the city and directed me to call them. My experience with the city has not been as smooth. I submitted a claim to the Claims Advisory Committee on or about July 28th, 2015, and I had a hearing to discuss my claim on August 25th. I finally received my notice of rejection of the claim the week of September 16th, at which time I scheduled a meeting with Mayor Berger for the following week. At that meeting, which lasted less than 10 minutes, I retold my experience, and one of the mayor's responses to me, and I quote, was "The city is not an insurance company." I do feel that there is a difference between hiding behind legal immunity and doing the right thing. Just because the city can does not mean that they should. We are all neighbors, and I think that the city government of all people or organizations should recognize that and live by that. I did not hit another person, nor was I hit by another person. I was not breaking any traffic laws. I didn't take my eyes off the road before me. Therefore, I do not think it's my responsibility to pay without share to fix what was a three month brand-new automobile when I did nothing wrong other than drive in the rain in the city of Lima. I would appreciate council giving my claim consideration for payment as a moral obligation. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Flynn. Mr. Flynn, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike Flynn, 2260 Oakland Parkway here in Lima. I came up tonight just to be aware of the concerns of the people in the Boyer neighborhood regarding the new facility. I've had discussions with a couple of council members over this last week, and unfortunately there were a couple of items, I think, that were objectionable, that were inadvertently put back on display in the store. They were subsequently removed as soon as we found out that they were there. I wanted to reassure, too, that the ownership of the facility will continue to monitor this. If anything else is found to be objectionable, they can go contact me, or they can contact the owner. We'll work with everybody to keep the place straight. I met with Tony Geiger this afternoon. We toured the store, really didn't find anything objectionable at that point. We responded to the concerns of the council first time I go around with this, and just wanted to come up this afternoon to reassure. It was unfortunate that an employee put a couple of items back in that really shouldn't have been, and they realized it, and they were removed. And like I said, this facility did turn out quite well. I want to thank the city for their cooperation in helping us in aspects of street vacation and also in helping us identify some sewer issues that were there. We did replace a large section of city sewer at our expense and cleaned up potential liability for the city down the road and removed a substantial sewer from the property. So the business is up and operational, and look forward to it prospering there, and I hope that, you know, that this neighborhood will support. So, thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Flynn, if you would, just one question.
Yes, sir.
When will the facility actually be under the authority of the Marathon name? Because that's...
That was, I understand, yeah, that was what they stated. I'm not sure what the timetable is for that. I understand that they're still working with Marathon, so I can't really say here tonight when that will happen. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is the consent calendar. Mr. President. Mr. Tebbin. I move that item A, the consent calendar, be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed. Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, receiving and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to advertise and contract for home housing development services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number two, receiving and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to accept a donation from Ashland Oil.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number three be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase a backhoe through a state bid.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to accept a donation from Blacktop Sealing.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare any necessary legislation to meet the request.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five and authorize any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend ordinance 28614.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any further, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to allow for an electric reverse auction bid.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to dispose of city surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Auditor regarding the civil service appointment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Auditor regarding the contract labor report.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Convention and Districts Bureau regarding their annual agreement.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed, and the law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 11 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Council President regarding the appointment of Sean Carpenter to the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion...
And approved.
The motion in the second, is the second on the approval table?
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 12 and to approve. Is there any discussion? Mr. Law Director.
I'd like to see council do these kinds of ordinance. It's easier to keep track of that way for years from now than trying to figure out what to put terms on.
Okay, then I'll ask to have the motion amended to authorize legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I'd like to amend my motion and...
To include authorizing legislation.
And to include authorizing legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 12 and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Saul Allen regarding leaf pickup schedule.
Mr. President, members of council, just want to briefly announce that the city of Lima Street Department, along with the parks, would like to announce that beginning in the week of November 9th, we will begin the leaf pickup in the first, fourth, fifth, and sixth wards. Once again, that's the first, fourth, fifth, and sixth wards. We will be asking at that time for the residents of those wards to start raking their leaves to the curb, to the tree lawn, anywhere but the street. And not the street, not the street. As in the past, I care a lot about not in the street, but we are looking to crack down a little bit more this year. I will be turning locations over to LPD this year that we're finding which piles of leaves in the street for LPD to deal with. So I'm, once again, you know, if you're seeing it out in your wards, please be mindful and let your residents know, let their constituency know that not in the street. If they do not want to wait, as usual, they can go ahead and start bagging. Bags are available. You do have to show proof of residency, that it has usually been a water bill. Those bags are available in my office, through the parks, 900 South College Street, and also at the water payment facility, the old train station, 424 North Central. As always, this is a leaf pickup. This is not limb pickup. This is not stone pickup. Also, I've seen a lot of locations out there where people have cut brush down, cut trees down, and have placed that alongside the road. If we find piles with that, those items in it, or piles of limbs themselves, we will bypass those piles. Our equipment is not designed to pick up that material. That material can be taken out to the compost center out there on East Hanthorn. Actually, I should know that, my grandfather lived over there. But so, but they can take that material up there. Make sure also all leaves are free of rocks, stones, grass clippings as well, and if I didn't say it before, not in the street.
One more time.
Any questions?
Mr. President. Can you forecast when the last of the leaves will come down?
Well, and actually, since you said forecast, any dates I would give you is also very weather-dependent. I want to put that out there as well. If we do start to get snow flying, or we will break the trucks down from leaf pickup to plowing and salting. So if the snow starts to fly, we move into snow removal. So I do want to put that out there as well.
And before I turn it over to Mr. Glenn, where are the leaf bags available?
Leaf bags are at my office, 900 South College Street.
Okay.
And also at the water payment, old train station.
Okay, and they need to bring a water paid water bill?
Some type of water bill or some type of proof of residence.
Okay. I just, it sometimes gets a little bit lost, but I think last year, or maybe the year before, we got into some snow, and we had to convert the trucks over, and we weren't able to complete, completely take care of the leaves.
Usually, we like to do, do two rounds. Most of the time, we like to get the first round done before Thanksgiving, starting that second round right after, that Monday right after. That's how we would like for it to run, but that's, like I said, usually weather-dependent.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Glenn.
One thing I want to say is that you can use your water bill and take these leaves to the compost, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure, because some folks didn't know that. So they got limbs and stuff, they can cut them up, and it's all free with your water bill.
But even with limbs, if you cut them up into four-foot lengths and actually bind them, you can put them out there with your trash pickup. But the actual bag leaves, you can put them out with trash pickup, and they should be picked up the same day.
There you go. That's what I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
So just want to make sure I'm clear here. It says on November 9th, residents need to start, and those four wards need to start raking. That necessarily mean they get picked up on the 9th?
We start in those wards on the 9th.
Starting in there.
We'll start on that, not meaning that we'll be done that day. We'll start in those various wards that day.
Okay, so starting November 9th?
Beginning November 9th, we'll be out in those wards.
Okay, all right. So to me, it sounds like on November 9th, you're going to complete all four of those wards.
Definitely not.
Starting, starting November 9th. You're good.
Definitely not. That's what I'm saying, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
If that happens, I want to know where you're hiding your...
I don't even want to know where to put them. All right?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Next, under reports of officials, Howard Elstro, demolition report.
Mr. President, council. Typically, a couple of times a year, I come to you and give you an update on demolition activity in the city. I was here, I believe, May 4th or 5th earlier this year, and now that the majority of the construction season is coming to an end, let me tell you where we are. So far in 2015, we've demolished 22 properties at a cost of $117,839. The source of the funds are $110,000 from our block grant sources and about $7,500 from our AG funds. The first part of your report looks as we have passed them out several times in years past. The first section that has been demolished is on the first page in a salmon-type color. The next four are those projects which are in appeals process, and then there are two pages of blue-colored addresses. That's about 49 properties, and if we had funds to proceed with those, that would be about $400,000 needed to demolish those 49 properties. However, I've added a few additional pages to your report this year, and I want to talk about that for a moment. You know, when you're on a journey, sometimes it's hard to see how far you've come until you've looked back. So what I've done is, I was able to assemble the numbers from 2008 to 2015 on the history of our demolition activities. And in fact, over those years, 2008 to 15, about 724 structures in the city have been demolished. Now, those are not all ones that we, the city, demolished. Those are ones that we demolished, as well as private property owners have taken efforts to raise their own dilapidated structures. Of those 724 structures, we, the city, have pursued and taken down 471 of those properties. So about 65% of these have come down with a city effort, and about 35% are by the efforts of the owners. Of the ones that we have demolished, on the next page, you'll see a couple of graphs, but really the one to pay attention to is the owners that are identified by zip code. This cells tells us about 25 or 30% of the property, problem properties in the city that the city has forcibly taken down, are addresses of owners outside the city. And finally, what I'd like to draw your attention to is the last page, because I think that's pretty significant. Between 2008 and 2015, so far, the city has spent about $3 million on demolitions. Those funds have come from our portion of the block grant, about $621,000. The NSP funds, which were part of the ARAS stimulus recovery package, we were able to compete for and bring $1,368,000 back to the city of Lima to put the work in our neighborhoods, cleaning our neighborhoods of these deteriorated properties. By efforts to move and secure state of Ohio, Moving Ohio Forward Funds, which is what we refer to as the Attorney General Funds, we were able to bring back to Lima $938,000 and again, put those to work cleaning our neighborhoods of dilapidated houses. And the General Fund has put in about $7,000 over that course of this time. So what I want to point out is, there's been a lot of efforts made. We will continue on this path to aggressively seek out the worst houses in our neighborhoods and demolish those with the resources we have available. But keep in mind that it's been a long path, and keep in mind of all those who have helped proceed with this effort of cleaning our neighborhoods of these dilapidated houses. And that includes the law department. The properties that we take on are not easy properties. We have to find owners. There's a lot of legal background and research of the titles that need to be done. There are legal notices that are required to be served by our staff in tandem and with help from the law department. You yourselves, council, can take much of the credit for this, because without your support of competing for these outside grants, we would not be able to assemble this $3 million over these years to get this, to get these properties down. And I think if we take the time to look even further, we'll see additional partners that have helped us become at least this successful in trying to clean up our neighborhoods. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Mr. Elstro, I happened to have gotten a call a week ago concerning a piece of property, and I referred to probably the list you presented to us in May. And saw the house in question listed, and it was pending demo, and it was at that time number 15 on the list. With this new list, I see it has moved down, and now it's under demo order process. And I don't have the other list with me, and I would like to meet with you to get a better understanding, because I know, I don't know if the right term is a living document, but if we have a fire, those will get on this list, will they not?
Yes.
And that could move others down.
And that can move, exactly.
That's what I want to emphasize, that that's probably explaining what's happened than what I looked at in May compared to some of the fire, and I'd like you to expand on that.
Well, as councilpersons or the general public calls in addresses of problem properties in their neighborhood, what that sets in motion are efforts by our department to go out and take a look to see if they are structurally deficient and to assess them. And then by that assessment, which is done by the building inspectors as well as the building official, Mr. Bill Brown, they are the ones that prioritize the order of demolitions by the severity of these properties. So in the case that somebody may have complained, and this is Adams, some time ago, back in the spring, and it was 15, without going into detailed research, that tells me as we began to rifle through this long list of properties, other houses became more, a higher priority because of their condition. Your point about fire is well-taken. We've had a fair number of fires this past season, and many of those, because of the fire, became so structurally unsafe that we had to move on those in an emergency manner. When a property is deemed structurally unsafe to imminent danger, then the building official can proceed on a shortcutted process without all the notifications that are typically required with this long process. Thank you.
And again, I would like, you know, call tomorrow to set up a time...
Be glad to do that.
...to get a further explanation on the one that I was referring to. And with your staff and their determination of, you know, the criteria, and I've seen the flow chart, and it's a spider web of yes's and no's, and going back to the process, starting over in appeals, and, I mean, these can drag out for a number of months or a year. year or more, and longer. But I, I've always felt, and, and your office has been open to, at least for me, to, to speak to you and to your staff, if I bring one that's on the list and would like to see it moved up, if at all possible, because of the complaints I'm receiving, the location of it, the, that causes, you know, the neighborhood not to be stable, the residents concerned, people using it in the winter months to live in. I also, if I may, Mr. President, with the new community police officer, I gave him a copy of that list. And the 5th Ward is very grateful, because the majority of these are in the 5th Ward. It's a double sword. I mean, I'm, I'm glad to see these properties go down, it helps the neighborhoods, it stabilizes it, it improves the property surrounding it, values. But I gave the list to the community police officer for in the winter months, so he could check those homes to see if there's any movement of people going in and out of homes that should be vacant and are set up for demo, because they shouldn't be, but they're getting, trying to get out of the cold. So he was grateful to get that list, and I will pass on this updated list.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Mr. Tevin.
I don't have any questions for you, Howard, but I do have a few comments on this subject. I want to thank you for the report, and I know the amount of time and effort from various departments, the Law Department, your department, Amy Odom's department, to make all this happen, and I appreciate it. I guess what I'd like to say is, if you think of someone going in for a job interview, and, and that applicant is sitting there in front of someone, you know, trying to figure out who this person is, sometimes that person will say almost anything. And the problem becomes facts and data, because facts and data are a very stubborn thing. I have heard it said by a vocal few that the city is not serious about housing demolition. It also has been said recently, and been published in the paper and on the television, that there's over 1,000 homes that need to be demolished in the city of Lima, and that the only reason this is not happening is the city council is playing with the money. That type of characterization is an insult to every council member sitting up here, not just to me, and I take it very seriously. The issue of housing demolition is a, is a matter of prioritization, and the amount that is allocated each year to be used for demolition is a very methodical process that involves many sources of community input, although I don't remember seeing the vocal minority currently talking about this at any of these community input meetings. Anyone who says that the city could afford to tear down 1,000 homes is exposing both their inexperience and their lack of knowledge on the subject. Here's the facts. It costs, on average, $8,000 to tear a household, or tear a home down. If the city wanted to tear down 1,000 homes, we would have to come up with $8 million. You just heard Howard say that from 2008 to 2015, we spent $3 million, or very close to it. And most of that money came from the federal government, because the economy was in such bad shape. So if we wanted to spend $8 million to tear down 1,000 homes, as some are saying in the city, it would be the entire CBDG budget, it would be almost 25% of the General Fund, we would have to cut many valuable programs, close the parks, lay off police officers, lay off firefighters, and we could tear down 1,000 homes. This ridiculous logic reminds me of a television commercial that I've seen, and it's still playing. There's four or five older ladies, and I use older carefully, because I, I know how old I am. But there's one lady standing, they're in a living room, and there's one lady standing up there, taking post-it notes and sticking them on her wall, and she says, "I am posting this to my wall." When she gets into an argument with one of her friends, she says, "I defriend you." One of the other ladies then says, "That's not how it works. That's not how any of this works." Well, that's not how demolition works in the city of Lima either. And some folks need to educate themselves by engaging their brains and educating themselves before they start putting their mouth into gear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
Mr. Elstro, I would also like to meet with you, possibly tomorrow. I know, five years of being on council, one area that I have pushed for the most is the Holler Street, and I see that it keeps getting pushed back every time a report is brought to us. And I'm honestly not understanding why. It's the only block that I've seriously came to you and asked you publicly and privately, can we do something about this? And again, it's being pushed back. So if we could, please, sit down tomorrow, if you could find some time, and, and speak on, it's two private, well, excuse me, it's two different properties on Holler. It has been used in the past as a flop house. People are staying in it sometimes. The one that's more west, in the 109, 107, 105, 111 area, it is a flop house. Graffiti, these residents have to look at this graffiti every day. People are bringing furniture, they're dumping it in front of it. If it wasn't there, I don't think they would do it. But the trash is bad. You got businesses right on the corner, you got businesses right around the corner, and the residents have to continuously look at this. Now, I can say without a doubt, for the last five years, it hasn't been touched, and it was a little higher on the list. And I'm, I'm not understanding why it keeps going back and going back and going back. So if possible, please, I ask you, can we sit down?
I'd be glad to sit down with you, Mr. Low. Just give me a call. I am busy in the morning, but afternoon, I think I'm pretty available. Would like to point out, of those Holler Street addresses, and there are how many buildings, you think, three?
No, I know, it's six in one and four in the other.
Alright. Actually, I think there's more than-
You gotta see the way it's done.
There's more than that.
Two of them are occupied, the front part is occupied.
Right, there's more than that on the list. What you need to know is, that is going to be a difficult demolition, where you have six units or four units. They are all titled individually.
Yep.
So that complexes the effort that the city will have to make to make sure that those properties come down.
Okay.
Is not a single owner that owns the entire building. But I'll be glad to go into detail with you tomorrow, so.
Alright, thank you.
Then I'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Next, Community Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
We had an Economic Development Committee meeting on 10/1915 at 5:30 PM. Attendance was Councilman Gordon, Councilwoman Adams, myself, the chairman, Law Director Tony Geiger, members of NDLACP. My presenter was Amy Odom, and Mr. Hardesty. Mr. Hardesty is here tonight for everyone, if any city council got any questions about this special project we have. And Mr. Kleese was here too, for presentation. But anything, you got back and front there, guys, so if, if any questions need to be said about this special project that we're trying to bring in our city, Mr. Hardesty can answer any questions.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that receive and file this report.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file the committee report as submitted in writing by Counselor Glenn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. If opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 20515.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New, I'm sorry, this is a second reading, to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the future for housing maintenance training.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 20515 be passed on a second reading.
Motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20515 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 20515 has been passed on second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 20615.
This is a second reading to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the future for administrative services under the city's housing program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 20615 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20615 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 20615 has been passed on its second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 20715.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide loan closing services and down payment assistance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 20715 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20715 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Epstein.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 20715 has been passed on second reading by a seven-to-zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 20815.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs for housing counseling services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 20815 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20815 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Epstein.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 20815 has been passed on its second reading by a seven-to-zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 20915.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide fair housing services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 20915 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20915 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Epstein.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 20915 has been passed on second reading by a seven-to-zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 21015.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rhodes State College.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21015 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21015 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of them, I'm sorry, we have to have the clerk call the roll.
Yes, we do. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 21015 has been passed on second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21115.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bradfield Community Center.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21115 be passed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21115 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 21115 has been passed on its second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21215.
Loving Specialist Assessment Property Maintenance Code charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21215 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21215 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 21315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21315.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for proposals for home housing development services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21315 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21315 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 21315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21415.
Authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from Ashland Doyle.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance number 214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to inform the public that this, we appreciate the donation, it's going to be used at the Simmons Field renovation project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes. Ordinance 21415 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 21515.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a Caterpillar backhoe for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 215-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 21515 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 215-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 216-15.
Amending ordinance 286-14.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 216-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 216-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? While the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes. Ordinance 216-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 217-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for electric services for the city's electors by...
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 217-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 217-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? While the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes. Ordinance 217-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 218-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction fire department equipment and vehicle.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 218-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 218-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? While the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes. Ordinance 218-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 219-15.
Amending section 436.06 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio Governing Displays of License.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 219-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 219-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? While the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes. Ordinance 219-15 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Next is miscellaneous business. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items this evening. First, I'd like to refer the issue of under moral obligation to the Public Works Committee of the Mrs. Neeper's claim.
Second?
The motion on the second is to refer the request from Geraldine Neeper for a consideration of a moral obligation claim to the Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? Mr. Armstrong?
I believe the sewer that was in question is a combined sewer, so it should be under the Utilities Division Department. Clear your mind. It's fine.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to change my motion, amend it.
Amend it.
To refer it to the Utilities Committee.
Second?
The motion's...
Second?
Okay. The motion on the second is to refer the claim as described to the Utilities Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone a week from tomorrow to vote. Please get out there and exercise your right that's been given to you. I'd like to ask, if I could, Mr. President, if Chief Hefner could come up. And it's kind of, when I saw Saul Allen's giving his report about leaf pickup, it brought to mind about the issue of burning in the city limits. And I asked the chief earlier today if he'd speak on it.
Mr. President, councilors? Thank you. Yeah, I was asked to speak tonight on the topic of open burning. Now, as a general rule, open burning is prohibited in the city of Lima, and for that matter, in most areas, most incorporated areas. That means there's no burning of trash, no burning of brush, no burning of leaves. Now, leaves can be bagged and put outside for your regular trash pickup day, or raked to the curb lawn, not the street, for pickup by city crews. There are two exceptions to this prohibition, though. Recreational fires, what we consider campfires, are permitted, provided you use clean, seasoned firewood, or the equivalent. You could buy firewood-type blocks and things like that. Those are approved. It can only be two feet high by three feet wide, the size of your typical fire rings that you can buy in stores. Those are perfectly legal. You need no permit. You don't have to ask permission. The second type of fire that are permitted are what I would refer to as permitted bonfires. Now, this time of year, schools, various organizations like to have bonfires, spirit bonfires, et cetera. We do require a permit through the City of Lima, through our Fire Prevention Office, at no cost. The reason behind the permit is it lets us, it gives us the opportunity to come out and take a look at the site, make sure it's safe, make sure your location will keep you from harm, keep your buildings, keep yourself safe, and keep your facility safe. With a recreation or with a bonfire, the EPA has to be notified. Again, we have to be notified and provide the site visit. The firewood can be stacked no higher than five feet tall by five feet wide. That's pretty good. That's a lot of firewood. Almost as tall as I am, by that wide. That's a lot of fire. That's the reason we require a site visit. If there's any questions, call our Fire Prevention Office. They'll walk you right to the process. They're very helpful. Now, at times, we'll get a call about a recreational fire, any type of fire. And the Lima Fire Department, as the fire officials, they can order extinguishment of a fire at any time for various reasons. But the officer in charge, it's at his discretion, and that could be for high winds, for excessive dryness, irresponsible behavior. And we do see that occasionally. Or legitimate objections by neighbors. If it's producing a lot of smoke, causing trouble in the neighborhood, that's a legitimate concern. We will ask you to extinguish your fire. So, for most part, recreational fires, I think those are the ones that Ms. Adams was referring to, those are permitted. Just make sure they're clean and make sure they're attended. So, any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And then I just want to make note that I referred to it earlier in speaking with Mr. Armstrong. Community Day, the C O P officer, we had a gathering a week ago Saturday at the new center on Kiwi and Calumet. I had a great turnout. Weather was a little cloudy and a few snowflakes we actually did see. But we had a good turnout, and I appreciate everyone coming, and the officers, the Sheriff's Department, other services were there to inform the public. So, I think it was very successful, and I'm sure it'll get bigger and better as they open up other locations. I also'd like to thank Mr. Glenn, Councilor Glenn. I attended his function Saturday to stop the heroin gathering he had there. Again, with the weather, and Make a Difference Day, there was a lot of activity around the city, great activity, participation from residents. His turnout was great. Appreciate him bringing attention to this issue, as it's not only a city, state, or country problem, it's a world problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I have a couple of things, I'll go a couple of things, Ms. Adams, I say. First, I want to appreciate the Martin King Neighborhood Association. They did a great job on Make a Difference Day. They had an opportunity to help out the veterans. They gave new warm clothes. So, they did a great job, and I commend all of them, coming together and working very hard to make Make a Difference Day. Also, the Miss Paul Community Center. We have a lot of kids down there, and people signed up for their food basket, for their Christmas baskets, and they gave out different things, the dog food. I'm going to keep the officer in prayer who got bitten by the dog. I didn't want to call his name, but everybody knows his name there, but it does something. So, keep his family in prayer when he got bit by the pit bull. That is something that no one want to go through, and they love one that's hurting there. And also, I thank all the calls about my father. Thank you guys so much for doing the prayers for him. Also, we'll be working again. I saw, said a lot about the leaves pickup. We are going to help some of the folks out. I always say, why are we first all the time? Because if the leaves not all the way down, we might not get around to that second pickup. So, but we are first again. But we're going to try to get it out there and get things done, because we cannot afford to get them drains stopped up. You know, the leaves in the drains, that causes floods. We got a lot of rain coming in this weekend, this week, so we hope that we can detain them floods in that area, some of the areas. Also, we are getting around on different areas. I would do my annual, would be in a newspaper, I would go around the neighborhoods to East Street and talking to people, talk to some of the folks before a snow come, and let them know some of the things we need to get done. We will be setting up a fall, what we're going to be doing this fall or spring, some of the things we're going to be doing, and so that people have some talk about the housing. And I see some of the houses that we have on demolition, some of the houses we want to get painted. We'll be working very hard this winter, getting that paint program back. That was a very successful program in the past, so we're kind of trying to get them back again. Also, we continue moving right alert on some jobs for the Christmas break, for kids coming out, and some of the dogs. So, it's going real good on that. A lot of people getting connected, different jobs on our internet service and contacting some of the folks. Band-a-box is doing real good. I know some question, people had gave me a call, is it affecting Lima right now? No, it's not affecting the City of Lima, but it's affected on statewide level right now. So, some of that band-a-box is on some of the state application. Also, I want to give, I'd like to thank Ms. Adams for coming out. We have some folks from the Dayton area and stuff. We want to give you a small token here, because, you know, they appreciate you coming out there and speaking, and got yourself a Starbucks there. The group decided to give yourself a Starbucks, too. You did a great job of speaking.
Thank you.
And the people from Dayton say they're very happy to see a city official out there. They didn't get none in none of their cities. But you came out on your busy schedule and spoke to the people there, and that showed our hometown pride. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of my things have already been touched on here. Again, I'd like to encourage everyone to come out to go out to the polls and next Tuesday and vote. It's a privilege that was bought by many, many people for us to have the right to vote here. So, your vote can and do make a difference. So, make a point to come out and vote and to decide, you know, a lot of the issues that are on the ballot here. Don't take for granted, you know, that your desire or your person may get elected here. You need to go out and vote for yourself. So, again, your vote can and do make a difference. Also, remind that trick-or-treat night is Thursday, this Thursday, from six to eight P M. Just will remind the motorists that there's going to be a lot of kids that are going to be out trick-or-treating that night here, and it starts to get dark a little bit earlier here. So, just be mindful when you're driving around the city next Thursday from six to eight here, that their little ones will be out, and, you know, they're not looking at cars, they're looking for that candy and that treat here. So, be mindful of them as you're out next Thursday here. And I, too, want to offer my prayers for the officer who was attacked by the pit bull. I pray for his complete healing. I pray that he has no permanent damage in any part of his body, that body that was affected here. And a lot of times, we take for granted, you know, the fact that officers and firefighters put their lives on the line each day for the safety of our city here. So, we have to really, truly, truly appreciate, not, again, you know, we can't take for granted, you know, that these officers are, you know, are doing anything bad, anything like that, you know? I mean, it's been worldwide here, but, you know, for our city here, you know, we just need to keep them in prayer, because each day, they never know when they go out, what danger they're going to encounter, or what event they're going to take care of. So, just keep our safety personnel in your prayers each day here. I mean, they protect us from a lot of things here, and we just need to be mindful of them and their families that they have to go home to each night, you know? So, just keep our city in prayer as a whole as we go from day to day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to refer the issue of vicious dogs back into the Safety Services Committee.
Second?
The motion on the second is to refer the issue of vicious dogs back to the Safety The motion in the second is to refer the issue of vicious dogs back to the Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Okay. And second, two, we have two issues that are in Safety Services, and I want to call the dates and time for that. On 11/16 at 5:30 P.M., we're going to have the issue of moral obligation for a Mr. Plogger. And on the same date, at 6:00 P.M., we are going to have the meeting to discuss any help we can give with the Citizens Review Board. And that'll be at 6:00 P.M., 11/16. And the only other thing I have is to remind people to be good to each other. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor, Miles took a little bit of my thunder, but I want to encourage everyone to please get out and vote. Voting is a right. It is also something, the only way that we can make changes. If you sit at home and you can complain all day long about how our system works, but if you don't get out and vote, you're never going to change things. So, please get out and vote on the 3rd of November and make a difference. You know, we just had a Make a Difference Day just the other day to help our community. And I tell you, there was a lot of goodness that came out of that. A lot of people were touched by it. A lot of things got accomplished that wouldn't have got done if it wasn't for the volunteers. So, I want to give the volunteers a hand, because the volunteers, if it wasn't for them, it wouldn't have got done either. And be mindful of Halloween and the kids, because those kids can dart out between cars very quickly, and just drive slow, be cognizant of them being there, and just be kind. Put your porch light on if you're going to give candy out. If you don't want to give candy out, take your light, do not turn it on, because you'll probably have little kids up there knocking on your door. There's also other areas to get candy. I know that they have like a trunk or treat that's usually in the square. You see some of the local churches that have it, and it's a very safe environment to take your kids to. So, encourage you to look around and see if you don't want to walk out in the middle of the streets and with your kids, some of those may be an alternative for you. And the third issue to talk about is this police officer that got bit by the dog. This was his neighborhood. He lived there. He's lived there a long, long time. This dog, that vicious dog that came after him, unbelievable, close to two schools. I mean, and I agree that we need to be very mindful of what we have as our animals. Our animals have to be under control. It could have been a German Shepherd, it could have been any dog, and I want to call it a vicious dog. A pit bull in itself is not the determination of a vicious dog. We know they are vicious, but there are others that are just as vicious. So, I'm glad that Mr. Gordon put this into our committee, and maybe we can find a way that we can protect the citizens. We've tried to put some meat and potatoes in those ordinances now, and we want to make sure that we can find a way to help not only our police officers, but kids, families, elderly people, whoever is close to that neighborhood. And those dogs come out after him is just unreal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to speak on this vicious dog act. Some individuals asked me not too long ago, actually, it was a family member asked me, why do you take your daughter to school when she's only five to six blocks away? And it's because of that reason. And when I had neighborhood concerns, we fought and we fought and we fought to try to give LPD some teeth in this fight. And if a dog or if an individual was to be bitten, the dog wasn't labeled vicious until after the act. And I, though I feel sorry for the officer and his family and what he's going through, I wouldn't even want to go through that. I think we're being reactive again, and I think that we should have used those tools that we had, and I begged for it. And we were talking to the individuals that weren't responsible pet owners, and I caught a lot of heat, the whole committee caught a lot of heat. And there were some names that were thrown out there, because I was trying to give, there were some names that were thrown out there towards me, because I was trying to give officers a tool. And we tried to explain many times in those meetings, I'm sure Mr. McLean can attest to this, that we weren't talking to the responsible owners. It's a shame that this had to happen, but let's stop waiting until one of our own gets hurt before we want to jump back in the fire again. The other thing I want to say is, in our neighborhood on Grand Street, though it's not my ward, I did try to call you today, though it's not my ward, there was some reporting on some activity of some drug sales in the 200 block of Grand Street. I'm just going to put it out there. I knocked on the door today, couldn't get an answer. I went around in the back, got one of the family members, but nobody would come back out, because I was just going flat out telling them, you got to go. It's getting old. We have to start speaking up. The reason that I stopped is because I seen a powder transition right in front of me, transaction right in front of me. I couldn't believe it. They're not hiding anything. And it's happening, and we keep turning a blind eye to it in this city. Okay? He just had a walk. I've been on this for about, maybe five years campaigning. We still do stuff. We're still helping people. We're still sending them. We're still talking to families. I've been in the broken homes. I've been talking to the 83-year-old grandmother who not only had her daughter, but her daughter's daughter was hooked, where they was using it together. We have to start opening our eyes and speaking and getting our neighborhoods back. We have to. We have to. We have to. One of the other things I was going to say is, I'm glad that Mr. Flynn and Paul came out tonight to speak on that issue. That tells us that there are some individuals out there who really do care. Now, I want to tell you, I was a neighbor of Paul's for about three years, and our kids played together. Paul never lied. He never lied. There's some times we had some disagreements, but he didn't lie. And I'm telling you what was in that gas station, and I'm asking you, don't support them if they're selling it. We have to send that message. These kids are young, going up there buying this stuff and looking at it, and it's designed to get their attention. Now, if he's taking it out, thank you, but I think Mr. Flynn was put in a position, I think he was hoodwinked. They said that Mayor Thomas was going to take it over, and now there's no answer of when they're going to take it over. I kind of feel sorry for him, but if he's willing to work with us, I'm willing to work with him. If it has been removed, I will be checking periodically. Some of the stuff is, you wouldn't know what it was, to be honest with you. The average person wouldn't know what it was, okay? And I was naive to some of the paraphernalia, too, until I had to start learning. So, I want to say thank you again to those two individuals. I pray that they don't bring it back to that facility, because I will scream from here to California. Clark Funeral Home will be celebrating the anniversary on Sunday, and I'm sorry that I don't have the exact time, but I think, I believe it's 3:00 to 6:00 P.M. They've been in our community for a long time, so those that can come out and just say, hey, we appreciate you. I think they're going to have some speakers over there, and I think it's going to be a nice time. He's helped many families in their time of need. I know he has supported some local minority broadcasting for many, many years, and I think it's time that we support him. And the other thing that I would like to say is, this week, I think I communicated with every councilman but Ms. Anne.
Okay, all right.
At one time or another, at one time or another. So, it's gelling, and I think it was a good thing. And I was thinking about that as we was going around tonight. I was glad to speak with everybody this week. Sam was in Puerto Rico, so he cut me off real short. But I just want to say, that's a good feeling. One more thing is at the Bradfield Center, me and our president had a debate. I think it went very well. I was glad at the turnout. I want to publicly thank the NAACP for hosting it. Also, want to thank publicly Lacknep when they hosted it at St. Luke, and Congress at the City Building. I mean, sorry, at the City Club. I think all of them were ran very well and greatly attended. Go vote. Go vote. Go vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
I only have about 14 things this evening. I've run into an issue, and I've had discussions with Mike Caprell about it, and it has to do with sewer laterals that run out from a house to the street to the sewer, and the section that is in the tree lawn, right beneath or very close to trees in the tree lawn, that the property owner, we put them in a, our policy puts them in a catch 22. We tell them they're responsible for that lateral, the maintenance of the lateral, and then we tell them they can't take a tree down in the tree lawn. And I'm dealing with one of those right now, and I would like to refer the issue and policy of dealing with tree roots from trees in the tree lawn as it relates to sewer laterals and the responsibility for repairs or maintenance, as well as the removal of such trees, to the Utilities Committee.
Second. The motion in the second is to refer the issue as described by Councilor Tevin to the Utilities Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, over the past 14 years, I've watched various council members, as well as myself, and one of our duties that the vast majority of council people that I've dealt with take very seriously is responding to our constituents' needs. I know that I take it seriously, and that a prompt response is not only owed, but it's appreciated. My personal phone number has been on the Lima City website for 14 years, and currently, I've got rid of my landline, so it's my Saul number, which is 419-230-1440. And that's how I receive most of the calls from my constituents. What I really, I mean, I enjoy those calls. I enjoy dealing with those issues and helping people resolve problems that they might have with the city, if it's possible to do so. Sometimes, unfortunately, the answer is no. But after the fact, periodically, you'll receive feedback from your customers, and I view them as my customers. I'm going to share two examples that I've received earlier this year. One is an email from Gene Jordan on South Woodlawn. He says, "Mr. Tevin, I want to thank you for your prompt attention on my request. I probably made a mountain out of a molehill, so to speak. I appreciate your prompt response. I guess the system works pretty well in Lima. We always talk about the bad, but forget how good things are and getting better." And that kind of feedback is, I really appreciate it. It helps you, you know, continue moving forward. The other one that I received was a card, and this one says, "Tom, just a note to say how much Carol and I appreciate your efforts on our part with our neighborhood concern. Having been on council, I know how much of your constituent work goes unrecognized and unheralded. We thank you." And that was from John and Carol Desenberg. And John, since we're talking about, please go vote, John was the fourth ward counselor. John beat me in the year 2000 by one vote on election night, so I know your vote counts. But to get that from John, you know, that was so nice of him to send something like that, and know that your efforts are appreciated and recognized. It means a lot, and I just wanted to share that this evening. Thank you. He said 14th. I have. I just wanted to scare you. About everything I was going to talk about has been talked about, so. The one thing that you missed is that daylight savings time ends this weekend, okay? So, in two weeks, I hope you're all adjusted so that you'll be here on time for the council meeting. That's all I have this evening. Mr. Tevin?